I have a tendency to arch commission.
Welcome everyone here to this workshop and the purpose of the meeting will be for the representatives of AT&amp;T to present a proposal to install small cell tower equipment in 14 locations out downtown and I'll turn it over to our city manager Cindy Cameron Noble.
Thank you Mayor. So it is, that is why we're here. Hey Alan, and I guess David Ball is going to introduce us to the other folks here and so you're going to give us introductions and you're going to tell us why we're here.
Okay. So, thank you all for being here. This is AT&amp;T and they want to discuss with you all this introduction from small cell sites. Mr. Alan Hill, who's with AT&amp;T, is, I think Alan's going to introduce the team that's here. They've got a whole presentation to show you what that involves and involves a lot of reworking some of the existing infrastructure downtown to incorporate some of the small cell infrastructure and equipment onto those, onto that infrastructure. So Alan-
So if I could add to that David. So I think this conversation began with us hiring hands over here a couple of months ago. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And I would say that in, a couple of years ago, there was state law that passed that basically, so I think it's, I think it's important that we understand kind of the basics of the whole situation. State law was passed that basically says companies doing this can do this in public right of way, just to simplify. So saying that, I think there's still some question about if all of it is in public right of way. Are y'all still on a search for that?
They are, they are currently researching that through a survey crew to verify the locations and everything that's on public versus if there are any private sites, they will have to identify those and then they would have to directly go to the private property owners if there's any on private property. I think they're trying to keep most of it on public.
In the right way.
So, so in a sense, this is more of an informational kind of workshop so you will be aware of what they're doing. However, there is a component to this where with Extonet and Commissioner Smith, you would not be aware of this company, Extonet, that first came in and brought in some small cell towers. So we did work, work, not work a deal, that doesn't, actually, we have an agreement, a contract with them and I don't even think that, that will happen this go around, will it?
No, there's not really a time frame.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Because of this state law that passed a couple of years ago.
Did this Extonet finish, whatever it is, did they finish their project?
Yes, yes.
And they have service down there?
Yeah.
That they sell to people?
They do. Extonet is the infrastructure builder and then you have your individual cell companies that buy to utilize or be located on that equipment. Extonet, yeah, that's what they do is they build the infrastructure and then they allow people like AT&amp;T-
And this is completely separate from that.
That's correct.
Is this solely just for cell service purposes?
Yes.
It's not for anything else? It's just for cell?
Right.
Yes, same as Steve and Matt.
So let me say this. The other, the other component though, that we want to see AT&amp;T do is what Extonet did, which is to re-fabricate the green poles that are in the underground area and to keep some consistency with the street scape and all the money that we've invested throughout the years with under grading and street scape. So that is, that is an aspect of this that you need to weigh in on. And I guess with that, anything else?
How about somewhere else is it?
And as I understand it, and by some here, I don't know if you were headed in this direction or not, but my first question was, why couldn't they use the Extonet infrastructure?
That's what I was going to add.
And they need to answer that because I didn't like the answer I got, but maybe you all get it better.
Well, we can. First of all, I know most of you guys, Commissioner Smith, I don't think we met before, but maybe we have, I'm Alan Hill and I'm based in this area and I know the rest of you folks here. But I do public and government relations work for AT&amp;T for East Tennessee and all, and so active in this area. But a couple of folks I'll introduce and we have a couple of engineers that are on the way too, by the way. So this is Patrick Doer. He's out of our Kentucky office. He's with AT&amp;T in our construction and engineering side of the house. He's done a lot of work on small cell projects in the Kentucky area and doing some in Tennessee as well. And then we have Noel Holmes. Noel is with our subcontractor called AmSCO LLC and they are based in Georgia and they've done a lot of our work in the Georgia area and probably South Carolina and other areas too.
Yeah, and then Tennessee and Kentucky.
Tennessee and Kentucky. So done a lot of work. So their old hats at this. A couple of engineers are on the way and they have some actually printed off that hand you too. We've got a slide presentation here. But Cindy's right, just to have the 50,000 foot view. In 2018, what we were seeing in the state is there's a lot of different companies like us and Verizon, T-Mobile and everybody else putting in small cell sites to have better connectivity, especially in major metropolitan areas and areas where it's very crowded. But there was, there was no consistent statewide plan and to make it faster for everybody to do this and more easily to keep up with the market, there was a state law passed in 2018 in the session then called the Competitive Wireless and Safety Act of 2018, something like that. But basically, we call it the small cell deal. And so it set forth a framework that everybody would agree to, the providers all agreed to do it and TML weighed in on it, County Association of Mayors, a lot of different people weighed in on it and gave feedback. And so that was passed in 2018. There were some amendments just done this session too. So some of the amendments have been done. So there's, it sets up the regulations of how it's supposed to work. You guys are classified as what we call the authority, whether it's a county or city entity. The structures that are placed up are, if you read the statute, it's called a potential support structure of ESS of some sort, whether it's a wooden pole or a light pole or whatever to put a small cell sign on. But that framework was set up to make it easier, faster to do the business. And it's not just to where a city commissioner, county commissioner, or planning commissioner would give a yes or no vote on is it approved or not. Basically, if all the requirements are met, then it does move through to the actual, you know, stage of implementation. However, there are things where we should meet the aesthetic plans of the city or county, any historical zoning requirements and all. So it's not like we ignore what you do. We want to be good partners, but it's set up that way. So that's why we're here tonight is to educate and we'll be going before the planning commissioner, I think on Thursday, to let them know what we're doing too. So a lot of things, but the reason, the business reason we're doing it and the technology reason we're doing it is because, as you know, people need better coverage on mobile devices, especially for data, but also for voice. And so for these high concentrated population areas, we need more of these small cell sites. The reason they call them small cell, they're only usually between 30 and 45, 50 feet high and as opposed to a 200-foot tall tower like all around, you know, Gatlinburg area now, the macro tower. So a macro tower small cell sites. We just finished, and you might have noticed some of those, in Pigeon Forge along the parkway. We put up 16 to 19 different small cell sites in the Pigeon Forge area just last year and it helped out with the connectivity there. So basically, your Gatlinburg residents, your visitors here, and also public safety first responders and law enforcement that use an AT&amp;T device, so this is just AT&amp;T customers, can use the small cell sites for better connectivity. So-
What's going to happen if USC, T-Mobile, Verizon and all of them come in and say, "We want to do the same thing"? What?
Well, they have-
They have the right to do that?
They have the right to do it.
Can we use the same poles? Can you-
Yes. Yeah, you can standardize your pole requirements, yes.
Which is what we thought we were doing with Extonet.
Right. And so to answer that question-
If you use the same pole though, I think-
Same type of pole?
What we mean by that is same type. Doesn't necessarily mean they have to be on the same pole. But you can standardize and say, "Well, here's the aesthetic of the city of Gatlinburg. We've used this kind of light pole and we want you all, whoever you are, to use this same standard from an aesthetic perspective." But it doesn't necessarily force them to go on the same pole.
Well-
They'd be four beside the side.
Yeah. You might have, that's why I was thinking that.
Well, there are some requirements, after looking at the law itself, there are some requirements to make sure it's not, you know-
Would you all lease your poles to someone else for some other-
We probably would not. I don't think we would.
Our, our small cells will not have the ability to add any additional carriers' equipment into them. So they'll strictly be AT&amp;T. But the new state law that Alan was referencing does make mention of distance limitations. Small cells cannot be any closer than X number of feet. So it's not like you're going to be going down parkway and have our pole 20 feet be Verizon and 20 feet be T-Mobile.
There's height.
How far, how far does your poles for consistency have to be apart from you lease the service between one pole and the other? Does it have to be like, you start here, is another mile down the road where you have to put another pole in?
No, it's a lot closer than that. The small cell sites operate really with pretty limited capacities for our signal strength. That's why you have to have more of them close together. But that, that brings up a good point in terms of the reason it's hard sometimes to locate, like on Extonet's poles for instance. It turns out that the poles they have, I don't think have maybe room for our radio set, antenna set, because they've already, I think they've already leased some to Verizon already. So, you know, they could be contracted to put another one up for us if we wanted to, but yet we can do the same thing. However, I will say this, the reason that you do have multiple companies needing to do it different ways is we all have our different ways, our proprietary way that we do our signalization and all. And so where the Extonet poles are physically, when our engineers like Patrick's team look at where we need it and turn it over to Noel's team that says, "Okay, where, where do you need it and where do you go?" is they don't match up with our plan because it has to work good with our macro cell sites around the Gatlinburg area too. And so even though there's might be a potential we could be on an Extonet site, if it's not in the right place, then it does us no good. So that's what we get into a lot of times there. So-
So is this going to be like your first phase as you're talking about the downtown area or you want to expand all the way through Gatlinburg or?
Well, there's, we have about 14 sites, some on the parkway proper, where it would, we would replace some of your, your light poles at our expense and make it look like, you know, it reflects Extonet, what they did. And we turned that back over. It's yours after the fact, you know, so you're back to the city again.
But are you going to need more down the road is what I'm saying. Is this phase where you want to do, are you going all the way at 321 to Rockville?
At this point, we, you know, we, we can't really speculate on the next several years. You know, we have 14 sites in the plan for this year. I mean, I can tell you just from looking at our, at our build plan, there's nothing currently scheduled for 2023 in Gatlinburg. You know, as with all major companies, there's, you know, things are subject to change. But at this point, this, this is the work that we're looking to do.
Okay. If I could ask something, I'm still confused about Extonet. Is that, are they out of the picture or you guys are going to replace what they've done or are they still a part of it?
There's lots of mayors doing it.
I want to hear the, the answer that Cindy didn't like.
Well, basically, I guess the answer that Cindy didn't like is the fact that we can't, we can't go on Extonet's structure today because they're not in the right location. Plus, their, their little canister up on top, which is the antenna set, you know, ours, you know, we'd have to duplicate and then they have radio and antenna equipment on the poles or at the base of the pole. There's not enough physical room in some places for us to locate.
And they probably don't have the technology that you have to do.
Well, I mean, one of the other issues is with the Extonet poles, the, the, the top mounted antennas, we can't mount an antenna on top of the antenna that's already there. So one, once Verizon or some other company leases one of those Extonet poles, us and basically anyone else is effectively locked out of it. We, there's no way to put another antenna on top of the antenna. Not to mention the equipment down at the base is of a size that takes up virtually all the space in there. There's no room for additional equipment down in the base of the pole. So I mean, we had both of those problems with the Extonet structure that's in place, on top of the fact that where we would need to build our small cells, their, their poles aren't in, aren't in those locations.
So perhaps we need to see their presentation to kind of get a better visualization about what they're speaking about.
I don't think that's going to change anything.
All right. They provided us some, here's the guy that can tell you about it.
So we get free AT&amp;T?
Yeah.
Just as soon as I-
Discount, free discount.
Well, maybe Alan will talk about it.
But here's the, I mean, here's the issue.
Okay. All right. So this is just kind of a basic overview and site map of our planned. Now there's 14 locations in total that we're looking to build and this is just kind of a overview of all of our locations.
Are you going to have a closer up?
I'm going to have a, I'm sorry, guys.
You have a closer one?
I do. Yeah, I have each, I'm going to go through each one. Yes. Yeah. So we can go through. So this is our first site and as you can see, let me know if I need to.
This is a red dot?
Yes. No, the red dot is our location right here. So the red dot is in the location-
Is there any way to enlarge that picture? Seth, where's Seth?
Is there?
Can we enlarge that at all?
No, it's down around the Rocky Waters area.
Cross from Mitch McCarty.
Yes. Hemlock, off of Hemlock Street.
So are you going to take these in, in kind of geographical order that-
Um, we, we haven't like, it's just by the way that we're issued the, the site. So I'm just going to go through them in chronological order, not necessarily in geographical order. Um, so that, oops, how do I zoom out? There we go. And then if I can zoom in on, this is a kind of a picture of what's existing. And so we will be, you know, co-locating our equipment on this pole. This is not one of the city-owned poles. This is a wood pole.
Wood.
So that's privately owned?
That, that, that's actually-
That's an electric system on the side.
It's already owned by AT&amp;T. So are you going to change it or is it going to look the same, that wooden pole?
It's going to be replaced, we have it replace it with a wood pole.
But it's going to look the same?
And just our equipment's going to go on top.
It's an AT&amp;T.
Yeah, and it will still have the street light on it.
I think that's a Superior County electric system.
Yeah, that's an electric system pole. The wooden pole, wooden poles are electric systems.
Yeah, we have, our, our internal work is to state that this, this pole is ours. There might be Superior County electric running to it. Oh, and this is Miles and Kayla. So we have our engineer here and our construction project manager. They got some packets for you guys. So next slide is right off of Historic Nature Trail. I can zoom in and here we're looking at the green pole.
Hey Alan, does the electric company, do they have a choice? As saying you cannot go on this pole, they don't have a choice either, do they?
I, I, right. I think as long as we, again, we meet the specifications of the law, you know, we do work with them closely, you know, they're part of the mix. So-
Yeah. There's in several jurisdictions, we have, you know, electric companies that we do co-locate onto their utility poles. I'm in Georgia, we go on Georgia power poles a lot. We'll go on coffee and C poles, we'll go on, you know, other electric-
So if you own that pole that you just showed by AT&amp;T, an electric system wants to use it, you allow that hooked up to that?
Yeah, we do have joint use poles. Yeah.
And this is where again?
This is the one on Historic Nature Trail and, oh, I just went to the next slide. And they have CDs for construction drawings for each site. And up to you guys.
Where's that? What's that, what's that?
This hotel.
That's just north of the Holiday Inn.
Is there a super eight on that side?
That's up in Marion. That's one of those where questioning wasn't allowed on public right of way.
This is the one. Okay. Yeah, we do have ride-in surveys that we requested. We heard, we know that there were some revisions requested to them and we are waiting to do.
We still have some to do.
All of those back.
Look here.
Structure eighteen.
Two sites. So that's a B humans, nineteen.
Yeah, we're on 19 right now.
Okay. As they're passing these out then, are they getting a staple copy for every site? Is that what they're doing?
Every site.
Right. So, so if you see the, up here, the structure number, right?
Yes, the TNG.
Eighteen and then nineteen. What you mentioned, going in sequential order, we've known. So I guess you'll get 14 staples copies, I guess. So you might be overkill on the information and we kill you.
Yeah. I know. Is this for each location?
Yeah. So it's our drawings for each, each site.
Is this for each location? I think we need to get the overview of where it's going.
That's right. It'll have existing, what it looks like and it'll have, it'll have the pole words.
Yeah, but I'm saying, Chad, from an overall perspective, seeing the city and where this is going. And I mean, I understand each of these, if y'all want these, have it.
Well, there are photo simulations in there as well. So you can see what, they're towards the back, I believe.
Is there, is there a one slide, if you will, one piece of paper that shows us the 14, is it 14?
Uh, yeah, that was on the front, this one over here.
You can zoom back in.
Zoom in. I think that might be.
I don't know how much it is.
So this proposed, how tall is this pole?
On the third page, it should tell you the proposed height.
So, but this is individually. So this is-
Yeah. So this is like-
David, how about going up there, showing us the locations that you're so familiar with.
What I, what I've seen so far are your wooden poles. I'm, I'm interested in downtown.
Yes, we have, yes.
Well, then you could go to 23, the sides. The 22, 21.
All business on the parkway.
Yes, just those.
So how many are they that you're changing back to the green? How many are there?
That's what I'm trying to get into.
This one, this one, 21, 22.
Okay. So Alan, let me talk to you just for a minute, please. Do we have like just a map of that that we could see and understand these locations? Because this individual information doesn't really-
Oh, I understand. You need the back review. So that map, is there a print of that in the-
I don't have a print of this. If we want, if you guys would like, we can print this out and bring it on to Thursday's meeting. I don't know if everybody's going to-
No, we're, I don't like to have this here.
I do not have a map of this, this cluster.
That's the best, that's the best overall map we-
Yes, I can absolutely email and send you guys a PDF of this. If that's, if that would be good.
So going back over this, can we point out the wooden poles versus the, our desire to see you all do with the green poles, what Extonet did? Can you show us such?
You want to see an example?
Well, an example would be good, but also the location. I'm assuming they're all on parkway. They have to be because it's the underground area.
So going through the slides, it'll say, so this one, this first one is 18, which 18 is a wood pole. And then if we go to the next one, it's 19. It's going to be a new metal pole by AT&amp;T. Then we go to 20, it's 18, new metal pole on Historic Nature Trail. 21 is the Gatlinburg.
Now here's, yeah, here's the first one on the main, the main parkway that's irreplaceable.
Go back to that one. What's the lot in front of the convention center? What kind of pole is that going to be?
It's a new field pole.
It's going to be a new metal pole.
It's going to be the green pole.
Well, that was the question we had. So we know for sure that you guys wanted all the Gatlinburg poles to be that specific green color. The ones that are the metal poles that are not on the parkway, there are some, we tried to match the aesthetics of surrounding poles that they're there. A lot of them are wood or brown or black.
Is that on Airport Road?
That's in front of the convention center.
But is it on parkway or Airport Road?
This is on historic-
Airport Road.
Same, same, historic and airport.
I mean, that's what they're talking about with the green pole.
But that was the question we had for you guys. If you wanted all new metal poles to be green regardless if they're on the parkway or not.
I can answer, but you all can answer all this. For the consistency, all green. And that whole area got underground in front of the convention center when the convention center was built. Just to take you way back in history. That's why there's no overhead utilities.
Well, if we're going to finish underground at Historic Nature Trail one day, you want to go and have it.
You want to have the green, right?
And that's something we wanted to teach you all that. It makes no difference to us if that old black brown-
That's the same thing it sorders in on that wooden brown pole that they have now with a lot to come out. It might as well go away and be green too because it's going up the parkway, but it's downfall.
I agree, but-
And to replace wood poles with metal, is that what you-
One thing I want to say, just to make sure we all are on the same page here too though. Now, when we talk about green poles, we talk about the light fixtures that are on the parkway. Those are decorative light poles. When they say poles, they're not talking about that pole necessarily in this location. They're talking about a solid metal, like a utility electric. You've seen those-
Nostrilic system?
Right, nostrilite, yes.
So that may be something you want to-
What number, what number is that from the convention?
This one, this one is a 20.
Alan, do the, do these small cell structures look like, y'all mentioned what you've done in Pigeon Forge. Have you gentlemen seen that they're black poles? There's one, when you leave and you come off this far, the first one you see is, what's that first road that you turned on at Dollywood Information? What's that road? Is that better?
So here's some example.
And it's, and it's a black pole. Is that what?
Right. Dark, yeah, the thing's dark, or dark brown.
Is that what, so-
I haven't seen the prototype exactly, but it's just the monopole with the cylinder on top.
This is a, this is a few examples of, here's a monopole right here, but it's a green one. It doesn't have a light on it.
That's the, that's the convention center. That way you can see what was-
Yeah.
Who wants the hive?
You said it's not going to have a light pole on it.
The hive, the heights?
Yes.
From just the-
The metal pole, the one with the-
Existing light poles on the parkway.
They're, they're going to vary each one, but can't find wrong, Miles, they're between 30 feet and up to 40.
What is that?
The heights, the heights. Yeah, 30 and up to 40. But these are examples of some poles that we have done in the past in other jurisdictions. Here we have just the plain pole. It is green and it has our equipment on top. And then we have some deco streetlight poles that are black with lights on them. And then this is photo simulations of two sites in Gatlinburg that we have. They're on the CDs. One on the left, the 25 is a Gatlinburg metal streetlight and it's that green color. So this is kind of just an en masse of what it would look like. And then we have an example of a wood pole as well.
And you want us to tell you which one we want or not?
Oh, well, for the wood poles, we're co-locating on an existing-
Okay. If that one is at the mall, it's going to be a green with a light sticking out. It's on the parkway.
Yes, yes. And any new metal or any metal poles that we place that are not on the parkway, we can make the same green color as well. Obviously, a wood pole is a wood pole, but for any metal ones, we can standardize and have that exact same green so they all match.
Are they going to match the parkway green already?
Yes. We have the color code for that so we can definitely get the paint to match for all of them.
So for the parkway poles, we're using the same, same dender as the, the ones who built the 2017?
The Extonet.
Yep, same exact pole. Minus the bulky bottom. So everything will be, be up top.
So what do you all think?
What layer?
There are six streetlight poles on the parkway. They're proposing to replace with that example there in front of Mountain Mall. That's what it would look like.
That's what it'll look like. Can you zoom in on that one?
Yes.
It'd be much like the Extonet one that's already existing, but it would be an eight-inch diameter all the way to the ground instead of having that large enclosure at the bottom. And all your pedestrian light and your street light will be the same height as the city-owned poles.
So the ones off the Parkway, we want metal and green, or you want to replace them with a wooden like they were proposing?
Well, the only ones we have that are woods were the existing wood poles. Everything else was metal.
Well, well, there are, there are some that are, if they're wooden and it's of good quality, then we can reuse it. We'll reuse it and just mount the, and, and.
Our equipment on top of it.
If we deem it's replaceable, or if we need to replace a metal pole without a light, then we're asking you, do you want it green? Or brown, black, whatever.
And it won't be.
That or you want to replace it with wood, I guess.
Yeah, we can replace it with a new wood pole, um, or we can do metal. And, and then if it was metal, it would look something, oops.
Well, I was going to suggest, just one thing, I, like, the location in front of the convention center. I mean, I think you might consider doing one of the, the light pole fixtures, because it's a little bit more of a decorative. You could have a light there for that, uh, parking area versus just doing a green pole.
What's the downside of doing a mall with a light pole?
Well, AT&amp;T doesn't usually, uh, take ownership of light poles, so that would be something that the city would have to take ownership of.
Well, that would be on the city's property anyway, in the, at the convention center. That's why I was saying, you might request that that would be one of the decorative light poles, because it's actually on the convention center property. And it would provide a source of light in that little parking area out front.
Yeah.
Rather than just be a.
And it would have to be underground, so just to be clear about that, because that whole area is underground.
Sure.
Do you want to take that on the, on the construction drawing, no construction drawings for that one? It was, I think it was twenty, correct?
Yeah, it is. Number twenty.
So you guys are wanting a, a metal deco streetlight here?
I think so. So there's something there, do you have it all?
No, we were proposing a, like, AT&amp;T-owned metal pole. Um, but if the city is going to take ownership of a, of a deco streetlight.
No, 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 we didn't have.
Is Cindy all right?
Right, turnover tolls.
Cindy, if they, if they do the electric pole for the light fixture in front of the convention, they hand it back over to us and we have to.
That's right.
That's, it's ours at that time, so, and you're okay with that to run?
Yeah, I mean, the rest of them are too.
Well, I guess the question I've got is, uh, if a car hits one of these things, or a truck? It's our responsibility.
It's the city.
You're equipping all the poles.
Yeah, we would, we, we'd come and we'd have to, you know, rebuild our equipment on the pole, but it would be the city's, you know.
Right, we possibly put it back up for them.
Where, where are you going on River Road though?
So, so if, just before we move to that, just real quick.
Okay.
If, if we replace, you know, a light pole, like for like, uh, then, you know, that's standard procedure in order to make it fit in with everything else. And it does, you know, revert to your ownership. In this case, there's nothing there, but we'll, we'll go ahead, even though it costs us more to do a light pole there, we'll still go ahead and do that to work with you. And it becomes your ownership, so you kind of get a, in a way, kind of sort of free light pole, I guess. Put, put, put your sign, so we're not replacing one, so that, but we can do that. Uh, and so that's, just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah.
So, but, then Mark, you had a question or comment or something?
I was just wondering where the locations were on River Road. I see, uh, one, two, three, four.
There was, there's one of them, on River Road twenty-four.
Now you're going to have to enlarge it now.
And it's right here, uh, by across Tesla's Dick House, I think.
And that's just, that's just the poles on light, right?
Uh, yeah, this is just a, a new metal pole, yes. So be a green, we can make it the green metal pole. And then, this one on the River Road is thirty-three. And that is right over here.
Yeah, no, we think that might be one that's going to be on private property.
Pardon?
That particular site, based on where the location was shown, that's actually on, on private property.
You guys think this one's on private?
That's one the surveyors.
Yeah, this is what we're waiting for the survey to come back, um, to confirm the right of way. Obviously, we want to be placing poles within the right of way and not on private property. So.
It's either Tesla or Bear Stearns, you know, so.
And if it comes back that it is on private property, then obviously we'd have to go through the channels to, uh, obtain permission from the property owner, or we will move it to where it's within the right of way.
Generally speaking, though, we're, we're going to set it in the right of way.
Yeah, we try not to deal with too much with them.
Yeah, we want to avoid it being on private property.
You want to avoid paying rent, don't you?
Well, it's not even necessarily that. The, uh, the process by which an easement gets agreed to, um, from my personal experience, can be very lengthy. Um, so we're, we're just looking to avoid, uh, you know, a delay of that nature.
Uh, and then, let me find, and if this is the next one, so thirty-four is the other one on River Road, right here by the mysterious mansion.
Okay.
Across from it. Uh, and then right here is our location.
What we need to do?
Well, again, this really was more of an informational workshop, uh, wanting to, uh, get your all's concurrence about the, uh, retrofitting of the city green poles. And I guess, that's pretty much it.
And so, for example, this site here, it is an AT&amp;T, and we proposed a new wood pole. Uh, but if you guys are preferring that any new poles placed by AT&amp;T are metal, we can definitely do that as well and make it a green metal pole. Um, and then just keep it wood if it was already existing wood. Um, or if you're wanting it to be replaced with a metal pole, it needs to be changed out. That's something that.
So, you make that decision, they'll contact you, and you make that decision, or Larry, or David, or Jeff, somebody?
What decision is that, sir?
Whether they're going to be wood or metal, or we're going to.
Yeah, and new poles.
Well, I think what I hear being said, let me, let me say what I think has been said. Number one is that on Parkway in the underground areas, they will do what Extonet did to retrofit, if you will, what's there. Okay, number, that's, that's number one. Number two is that where there are wood poles that are more than likely owned by the electric system?
Or, and/or it could be AT&amp;T.
Okay, they're going to use wood poles. That's what I hear being said.
If it's exist.
And third is that.
If it exists, yes.
If it exists, they're going to use the wood pole. And if it doesn't exist, like in the case of, on Airport Road at the convention center, then we've, we'd ask them to do the green pole.
That's, that's exactly, well, and the other thing we talked about too, is say, hypothetically, they're going up Airport Road, and I think most of those utility poles have been changed to that, the galvanized aluminum poles. And they locate on that, then that's fine. But let's say there was a wooden pole up there, and then we come along, at some point we'll do undergrounding, then that pole will have to get changed. At that point, I think, to match our, our undergrounding aesthetics.
Yeah, and one thing, that's what you said, is the convention center pole, if you also agree, and let us know tonight or soon, soon. Uh, did you want a light there? We can do that.
I think we want light there.
We do.
Okay, they want the light, okay, green light, okay, so it would look like the other. Then, then where there's not an existing structure, when she just had little X's like this one here, Noel is saying.
We can do the green metal pole.
If you just want us to do them all green metal, period in the subject, and we won't put up any new wooden poles, and it'll look, you know.
I think that would be.
They look pretty attractive, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, anytime you put up something, you know, nobody really likes anything, but that don't look bad. Honestly, those are, Pigeon Forge really are quite, and I've got several pictures on my phone.
I'm just curious, how much is the difference in cost between the wooden pole and then the metal pole?
Existing green poles.
I don't know, y'all don't have to worry.
That's roughly.
Yeah, I think I'm saying it right.
Twelve to fifteen thousand.
So, on the, on the Parkway, the undergrounded green pole. Are they adding?
And I guess the only question I'd be, what the, like, the one at the, was the convention center? Or like any of the new poles that were once. You guys made things that were replaced on, do they see?
Replacing.
You have the road lights on the Parkway are pretty long, so you might want something shorter.
We would, yeah. Because that's a firelight.
Noel, actually, so, along the main Parkway, we're all underground utilities, we're replacing existing light poles. Well, I guess all those places that we're asking for on the Parkway, they're replacing an existing, not inserting one between.
Right, no, replacing.
There's no new ones.
Yeah, no, no new ones on the Parkway. Um, and we are going to be refurbishing the light itself from the existing pole that's there and using that same light, uh, in our, in our pole.
So does that answer that?
Yeah, the old high-pressure sodium lights, yeah.
Oh, really?
We can't get LED?
Well, you would have a different.
They would, they would match. They would match, yeah.
They would match, yeah. Uh, I mean, it needs to be, when you do something like that, it needs to be a wholesale change up.
You still, those are high-pressure sodium.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, and then, so, like I said, this is just kind of an example of some, uh, in other jurisdictions, some types of poles that they're required that, you know, some people like black metal poles or green metal poles, um, and so these are just some examples, and then, obviously, we have this example here. This is just kind of an overview of our antenna and radio equipment that we're going to use. Um, they're all on the CDs as well, it calls out which CD, we'll call out which equipment should be used on the pole. Um, just kind of an overview of our pole structural. And, uh, we did get, I know, David and Larry had requested about foundation, so we did get one from CommScope, who is our pole manufacturer. Um, so this is kind of, uh, just an overview of the foundation of the pole.
Is that the base?
The base, yes.
And it's, it, what's the diameter, what's, what's the measure?
I don't think they'll do that as part of what they're doing, or are you saying?
Can we put one outside, David or someone else?
It's a concrete embedded, it's based on the soil type, but then they have a basically thirteen-foot-long, twelve-inch diameter, eight-inch diameter embedded pole. It can also be placed in the ground in the pole vault and out of it.
One, one difference in this and Extonet, and we think it's a positive difference, is that Extonet places their equipment in a base. So that base had to be bigger, which takes up more pedestrian walking space.
Makes your sidewalks less agitated.
That's where I was trying to get to.
Eight-inch diameter kind of poles, so you don't have as much encroachment down at, down at the bottom, uh, as you do with the Extonet, so that's.
Okay.
Our goal is basically the pole would exactly the same except for the very top. Street lights will look the same, same heights, diameters.
And also, we give them the information as well on, on all the connections for the poles for the Winterfest decorations, so, so when they go up, we can.
Yes, you should be able to use all of the, the, the same decor on these poles as well. Um, just some more of our pole specs and enclosure equipment, which is called on all of our construction drawings here, mounting equipment and disconnecting equipment. But, um, anybody need to add to, Sammy?
No, nothing else there. Um, any questions that could be answered from a design standpoint or anything?
I want to add that we talked to Larry and David both about the traffic control plan, of course. We know, you know, busy time right now. Of the only times it's not busy up here anymore, and it's still busy in January, February, but we're, we're. Our goal is to be finished by the end of the year, and so we'll have to, you know, work very closely with Chief Rackens and his department on traffic control plan and all. And if there's any way to work some at night if we have to, but keeping in mind hotels and things like that with lights and noise, you know, we have to be cognizant of that. But that's the goal, is to get it done.
What about the Parkway? You going to have to close the lane down?
Uh, we do have traffic control plans on twenty-four, on the Parkway.
That's some of the stuff we talked about with Alan, is that if it's on Parkway and it's not near a hotel, then the preferred time to be working on those would be wee hours of the morning, so that you're not impacting traffic.
Then did, was it one of the conference calls we were on that talking about, was opposed to using a, like a bucket truck or some other kind of vehicle?
JLG would. Yeah, we could use a sister loiterer, JLG, that way we'd have to block off the sidewalk, but we'd keep the street moving.
Right.
The only part we, we wouldn't have an option, obviously, would be for any kind of boring work that would have to be done for power. But as far as mounting equipment and work with the pole, we could accommodate.
The limit, many roads.
And we'll submit, we, all our.
Blank load, not road touch. Close the road.
Yeah, each site will have its own traffic control plan submitted, and then we'll have, we have power paths as well.
We actually have those as well, I can hand those out.
So, there, this is, is something that is stated, it's on planning commission agenda, um, Thursday evening, and then permit gets issued here pretty soon, doesn't it? Or permits, how, how does that work?
Well, once we get all the information, then we're, we've been communicating back and forth about survey information, that kind of stuff.
Right, so once we confirm with our surveyor that everything is on the right of way, we can provide that document to you guys. And then, um, obviously, we'll get our construction drawings redlined to show the changes we discussed here. If that is what the consensus is, if any new poles placed, we'll do the same green, it'll be metal. Um, and then the one on convention center would be the metal streetlight, and I think we said maybe a shorter streetlight on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can get those revised to show those changes. And then, once we have all of that, we'll submit the full packages, re-sent them, submit them back to you guys, um, you know, for your review and approval. And then, you know, once we get these pushed through the permitting process and the fact that we can hand it over to construction, and, you know, they can, they'll have more flexibility as far as scheduling around your peak holiday times and that kind of thing, so.
And some of these have to go before T-Dog for right of way.
Right, yeah, we're going to, yes.
They're used to working with us, a lot of things, they did all of, a lot of Pigeon Forge signs with us, they're very good to work with, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you for being.